Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming. We'll get to this quickly at our panel. Chris, why don't you come on? Because I know you've got stuff for us and just need approval and you need to move on.
We just wanted to talk about the SERC program. Sandy came to talk before about it and just kind of gave you guys a quick understanding of it. And we're going to start moving forward in January. And the big question was just, this is going to be a volunteer thing that's kind of associated with the county. And the research that Sandy's done, talking to the insurance folks, we haven't found any problems with it. We just wanted to make sure that you folks knew that we were doing this and if there's any liability issue of having volunteers.
Only thing about volunteers is talk to our insurance agent.
We did, yeah.
As Branson. Okay, she has to put you on a roster of volunteers. So everybody has to be on that roster, but as long as they're on that roster, you're going to be covered.
Okay.
Explain to me again what it is. I remember us talking about it.
So it's the Community Mercy Response Team.
Okay.
So I would say the volunteers that in a disaster situation, if Chris were to call out, they would go and do first things.
Gotcha.
And help first responders. So when the professionals get there, the SERC team would back off unless needed.
Okay.
It's all female financed as far as training.
Great.
We have two trainers already trained that are willing to go ahead and train under.
Okay.
We just had a SERC back years ago.
Carla just needs a list of all the potential volunteers that will be on that list. And if you get a new one before they can go do anything, they need to get on that list as well.
I need contact information for her. I've lost her.
Carla Branson, Carla, Los Angeles Branson Insurance. Right behind the old National Bank building.
I had her name, but didn't.
Yeah.
Across from the post office.
Anything else, Chris, or that is it?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Do you want to prove, anyone wants to make a motion to approve her participation in that? It might help.
Okay, I think that would be a problem.
Yeah, it might help the service. So I make the motion that we allow emergency management and the volunteers to create this SERC program.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
Yeah. All righty. I know we've got business to go forward. Let's get Cindy up here too, so she doesn't have to stick around. Unless she's going to stick around anyway. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and tell us. We've got an opportunity here, Randy's here now too. I might even hear this as well. There's an opportunity with Melcher Bridge. Randy, Cindy will need a copy of the proposal that people gave us for the cost for the Melcher Bridge. This program seems to go talk about, we can get a grant possibility up to $100,000 of that. Wasn't it like $160,000 or so? That ballpark number?
For the design?
No, for the work, for doing the Melcher Bridge.
You mean just what the engineering firm does or?
No, I haven't.
The bridge?
The bridge.
The bridge is $500 and some down.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't remember it being that much.
I think I had to do that.
Okay. But the engineering was over $100,000?
Well, it was close to that $100,000.
Because I was thinking the final number we came up with was like $160,000. We were surprised how little it was going to be. Anyway, we just need to get those numbers to Cindy. So Cindy, who's doing this grant?
So this is actually a grant through DNR on a Wabash River Heritage Corridor for historic and cultural projects. So if you have structure or land that is within, it's like a 500 and some mile radius of the Wabash River, and it's already listed, or and it's listed in the state or national historic registry, those are the eligible projects. So with all of the Park County bridges being listed on that registry, we were just talking about maybe some projects that may help fund some things. So this project, as you said, is an 80-20 matching grant up to $100,000. The deadline for application is the end of January of '24, so we have to work pretty quickly.
So you just need the numbers from Randy's office to get those.
I need that. I might need some information from Mary Ann, just county specific, to be able, you know, all the goody things that they ask for. If you find that that's the right price that you want to move forward on.
There's four payments of each phase, that's $79,200 for each phase.
Okay, so $80,000 each time.
Four, three, twenty.
$320,000, okay. Then I make the motion that we authorize Cindy to go ahead and seek the grant on behalf of the county, searching for funds to help with the Melcher Bridge project.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go ahead and get to business here real quickly then. We've got minutes to approve from the December 4 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 4, 2023.
And I would second those. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, I get it. So over there, I forgot Dan wasn't going to be here.
Not a problem. I can slide over to him. While I'm saying that, if I slide over middle, council asked me to order three new chairs for in here, so that's okay with you all. Cindy has a website that furniture comes on. We need to replace some of these two, but that's not a priority for me right now, so we'll get those ordered. Okay. Next, we have payroll in the amount of $208,016.39 and one only.
The other one?
For the hospital.
There was no hospital, but the claims. Suzie called in sick today, and I didn't know how to run the report. And I'm working on settlement.
We can get that the next time. I'll make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $208,016.39.
Second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
All right. New business, we just have the Purdue Extension Contract to.
I didn't get that to you early.
It's the same contract every year after them, so I gratefully looked through it. I didn't see anything alarming.
Then I'll make the motion that we approve the extension services contract between the Purdue and Park County Government.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
There's two pages that need to be signed. I think just.
I think it's just.
I got a whole box of pins at home I need to bring in.
I'll get it. I really need to get the good one.
Yeah. All right. Then we have an appointment to the House Board.
Well, this is the one that you approved last time, but now there was a certificate that needs to go to the state, needs to be signed.
It just needs to be signed.
Just by me?
I think so. She didn't want to give us that one until she got the other one back signed.
All right.
We're done.
Almost. It won't be much longer.
Well, with the stuff though.
All right. We talked about the only insurance we have left to approve. The council did decide to go with the 6% increase on the insurance to try to get back even since it's been a tough last couple of years. Travelers insurance, we will be voting on that the first meeting in January, January 2 meeting for our property. I talked to our insurance broker today about that. And then I think the only other thing right now is Randy, what you got, Randy?
I don't have a lot. I want to get your opinion on some roads that I'm trying to do. The grant for 2023-2, we had $233,000 left in that grant. And we had Strawberry Road picked out, Lena Road, and County Road 1100 East, Lena Road up to Pinzam.
Strawberry Road out to the prison?
Out to the prison.
Yeah, from the town line to the prison.
Strawberry Road's $114,337. Lena Road is $112,653. And 1100 East was $156,439.20.
That's more money than we have.
Yeah, that's more money than we have. But I had planned on doing County Road 200 East from Marshall Road up to Warrior Road.
Okay.
But I, this Lena Road is worse than that.
Okay.
And that would connect everything up down that corner again.
You can trade off then. You've got enough money to cover that?
I'd just take, drop that road to another time.
Do we have to get approval from the state to use that money in a different road than what we applied for?
No, we're still using the two on here for the grant.
So those two will cover that then?
We will, we will pay the contractor to do Lena Road.
You okay with that, Riz?
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion, yes.
Okay, I'll second that. Move to second then to approve the superintendent's request to do Lena Road with the money he has for this year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then on the new grant we've got, we'll have in January, we had County Road 800 South, it's down there from Lyford to Cottrell.
Right.
And then 350 West, that takes off the 800, going down to 900.
Now, I'm lost on that one.
Did that, that was that connecting road that we drove down?
Went south.
With, you remember 800 goes east.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the other curve?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that one went down to 900, which we've already paid, right?
No, we haven't paid yet that.
No, but 900's already been paid.
Uh, we, no, it's, we'll need it for, the thousands where we paid.
The thousands what we did, okay. 350 went from what, 800 to where?
To 900.
900, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I remember that drive, yeah.
Yeah, we went south on that road, yeah.
Okay.
And then we had County Road 75 East, well, two roads really. One of them's from 900 South up to 720, and then 720 up to Martin Road.
Okay.
But that comes to $1,503,000.
Okay.
That's well over it.
Well, let me just say something. And I told Jim this earlier, and I told Cindy. I just got an article. I wish I would have brought it. I did bring it. But I got an article, and I can't remember if it was from AIC, Association of the Counties or Commissioner's Association, that in 2024, NDOT has, we're going to have a special thing where you can apply for 1.5 million instead of just 1 million.
Oh, okay.
As long as you had some things in place, like your asset inventory and whatever. We've got all of that. So from what I could tell, it looked like we qualified for the 1.5 instead of 1. So I just told Cindy that, and I told her to research it. And I will, I'll get that information to her tomorrow about article. But that's, if we can get 1.5, that takes care of those three roads right there, which you said was 1.5.
When did they run these numbers for you?
Couple of months ago.
Okay. Because it may have come down some since then too, if things are trending that way anyway, if they are. Because oil prices are way down, what they were, so maybe we can get the full 1.5 out of it, so.
Yeah, and these may be lower anyhow, I mean.
Yeah. So that'd be good.
That's, we'll just let that ride then.
Yeah, but like I said, I'll, I'll get that tonight.
It's on their website.
Is it on their website?
Right.
Yeah. The other thing is you have to have closed out any of your 2022-1 projects.
2022, are they all done?
They're closed.
They're closed, okay.
Yeah, just the first call.
23-1's closed, so.
Okay.
22, or 23-2's not yet, but that'll be closed. Well, I can get that done.
Right.
No, that's the only two things.
That was the two things. You had to have your 22 closed out, and you had to have your asset in. And we meet both of those.
That'd be great. I talked with the.
I think we qualify to apply for 1.5, so we might as well apply for 1.5 if we can get it. Yes, that's more of a matching grant because if it's still 80-20, but.
We're still matching the same amount. You're going to match it next year if you don't do it this year.
Yeah, if you don't do this, I think council will come up with it if we.
75-25.
Or 75-25, okay.
For us, small enough, yeah.
So that's my, I'm just throwing out a recommendation. I would, when you guys fill out your January application, I'd go for the 1.5 million and those roads you just mentioned, unless.
No, I think that's good, because that was on our list. That's everything that was left on the list before that we made, that's.
Because even if we talk about Marshall and Strawberry, yeah, I mean, those two will be more than probably 1.5 million too.
I don't think so. I ran them miles wise. If we're still not.
They should be.
Yeah, should be right in main, I think.
Unless we wanted to switch.
So their website reads like they may renew it again the next year, but they're going to evaluate as a pilot.
It's a pilot program for a while.
So they may stay at 1.5.
Well, Strawberry Road and Marshall Road, I didn't see many holes, but it's really rough. It's been patched so many times. They've been on so many times. So I would hope, because those are main thoroughfares, both those are main thoroughfares. People going north or coming south off of 47 are coming from Monzuma. So if we get those done, that'd be great for next year. We can get that done. And I already talked to the council about that at that end of year meeting that we had, just about. Even if we were a little bit short, could they help? And they would look, but we may have some art money might be available too, to finish that off. What I don't want to do is part of it and part of the next year and part of it. I want to do the whole thing all the way through at one time. So if we can do that, that'd be great. And then we go back to looking at, looking at the other things. Plank Road, I think I heard mentioned a while ago, so we can look at that and see how that.
I mean, it's a really short distance. It's just.
I understand.
Where's that?
In Monzuma, that plank road, that is the Wayne Street. It's just that little bit.
That would be a good room for us.
Yeah, I was going to say for us to look at with what money we have.
Right, right there. So I think that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, the town did a really good job of patching to what they had.
Yeah. Well, they could have gone ahead and done the rest of it since it's a short one. It's just months.
It's really good luck for you to have done the other part.
Yeah, we could have worked that out. All right. So we already voted to do those, right? We took that vote. So that's, that's good to go. And then if we can look at then doing Marshall Road all the way from 47 all the way to City Line there, Anderson Street when it gets down there. What, it is that street where it hooks off just south of the, of the lake there? That road that comes up to town. What's it called now?
Martin.
Yeah, maybe Martin or something.
Okay.
No, we go on up, we go on up.
You're going up the hill.
Yeah.
Stark, Stark goes this.
Used to be. My street comes out.
Okay.
You actually have both, because the town has, there's a sign on Martin where it town limits stop.
Yeah, where we stop. Where Park County makes its stops there.
And then you got Stark goes up too.
Okay.
So you really have a wide.
So hope to do the whole, whole works, get it, get it all done. Then we're done with that then for several years then hopefully. And that is a main thoroughfare. So we need to get those once in a while. We have so many other needs and so little money to do them with, but. Yeah. That'd be good. So we'll plan on that then. Anything else?
That's all I have.
You got enough staff to blow snow if we need to?
Well, for 12, 14 hours.
Okay. How many CDL people you short?
I think three or four. We've been patching every day we could.
I went down. Did Jenny tell you I went down, did that bridge?
Yeah.
Lady had called about that again, and a little snippy, which I don't like dealing with that. But I didn't do it because of that, because I, it needed to be done. And I was available Saturday afternoon, so I went down, got that done, and that was good. So let's finish. So I can't think of anything.
Yeah, we need to go back, fix a garden there on the southeast end.
On that bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a.
It's out on the, past the bridge.
Past the bridge, yeah.
Yeah. Somebody's hit it.
Okay.
Bit of post.
Okay. Anything you need to muss?
No, don't think so.
Well, Bruce is okay with that, and I think Dan and Stu, let's just plan then on our next go around for Strawberry and 10 o'clock and Marshall, and see if we can get those done. And that way, those thoroughfares are done, then we go back to working on the, on the ones getting to the thoroughfares. Then the amount that you have planned to do, take care of plant or whatever those other roads are that they come up and we can do those.
Yeah, we might be able to get that.
Yep.
Next year.
Great, great.
Date you know.
Yeah.
I won't be here, but.
Yeah. So when won't you be here? Have you picked the date yet?
May 31st.
May 31st, okay. Okay. And if we need an operator to come back and do stuff, are you interested in doing that kind of stuff?
Possibly.
See, I was always, I kind of envisioned that. Once you got to where you weren't doing the superintendent, you want to hire somebody. If you go back and you be like a site manager kind of thing, because that's what you do. I mean, there's, nobody has the skills you have to do those things. Nobody can operate the machinery even that you do, so. So I can't speak for Bruce or Dan, but as far as I'm concerned, that, that's wide open. Anything you want to do like that, you're welcome to do, so. We'll pay you, I don't know, five, six bucks an hour. Whatever it takes.
Might get to better, but.
Play with all the. 25 now, so.
Play with all the equipment you want that way, so, yeah, we can work on that.
No, he gets tips.
Well, I tell you, that perf is very good.
Yeah. We don't get that. We could have, but the county doesn't, doesn't do that. Commissioners don't do that, and the council doesn't take that. They do it for employees, but not that.
These young people, all that.
They should. Can't encourage them enough. It's just, and it's one of the things you don't realize till retirement time, what it's grown into. They just, they just don't understand.
Very true.
I had a guy I had coffee with, he worked, I won't give you his name, but you know him. He didn't even know he had a retirement plan where he worked forever up in Crawfordsville. And HR called and he was getting ready to retire. HR came in to share some papers with him. And he had a quarter million dollars in his retirement. They couldn't believe he had. Didn't know existed, but just because of that kind of thing, so.
No, I'm jumping on it. Like if halfway it cuts up.
Need to sign up for those things.
I definitely am.
And you can buy years. If you need to buy years, you can buy in. It's a good program. It's meant to help the employees all they can, so.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't want to carry on, but we'll see you again before then, but you know how much we appreciate all you've done all these years and done what you can with what you've had and the things you've had to put up with, so you're appreciated.
Yeah, I might think about staying, but if I could give some help.
Yeah.
You just can't get help anymore.
I understand. Okay. Appreciate you.
All right. You guys take care and have a good day.
Happy Christmas to you.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah.
Yeah, New Year's.
So no graft anymore? We don't get hams and M and N's and stuff anymore? Man, what's up with that? These guys used to think they could buy our vote by buying us a ham, so.
Correct. They got too poor, I guess.
I guess so. I guess so. That was always funny to me, even the legislature began to regulate that stuff. Like, we're going to change our vote on a multimillion dollar contract because somebody bought me a ham. Oh, yeah, well, we'll give it to you then, yeah. We're going to go with that.
Took me out to dinner or whatever, so.
Funny.
Things still take your attorney out to dinner.
I don't know. It's not a problem.
And of course, fire's engineering, they sold out, so.
Did he finally after all this time?
He was in Texas, but he's out where his brains went down.
Good, good.
Yeah. He's been at it for a year, a little better than that.
Well, he's been at it for a long time.
What it's called now, a line, I think.
Okay. Was it an existing company that bought him, or somebody just bought him starting their own?
I think somebody, another company bought him. All the guys are still there.
Talking about Dave Myers. Good guy. Good guy. Did a lot of good stuff for us over the years.
Well, have a good evening.
You too. Thanks, Randy.
Ah, take care.
You ladies have something for us?
Sure. So it's been a while since I.
You have, Mary.
Yeah, but I wanted to come today, and I wanted to bring my clinical supervisor with me.
Okay.
That way you guys could meet her as well in case I can't be here. But this is Christina Urban, and so she is my clinical supervisor. We talk to you guys about crisis services, skills and case management. But one of the things that I wanted Christina to touch on, because this is really her specialty, is our SUD treatment, or our Substance Use Disorder Treatment. About approximately 70% of the adults we treat have a dual diagnosis with mental health and substance use go-kering disorder. And we offer services to help with those. So I wanted Christina to kind of come in and explain. That way you guys can ask any questions of us that you have. And as you can tell, my voice is going. You guys hear me often enough. I'll let her. So I'm Christina. Although several of you I've actually met that I was about that tall. I used to be a boatman before I was an urban. So this discussion about 900 makes me very, very happy. I took over the old family properties, so. That would make my week. So as far as SUD treatment goes, most people, about 90% of people who have an addiction also have an underlying mental health disorder. Sometimes that can come before the use, and sometimes it comes after. And when it comes after, a lot of times it's trauma that's integrated into the things that they've done to get the substances, things like that. So we treat, we work to treat both. We have some groups that we run. We have one that's for people who aren't ready to change, but maybe are court ordered. We work with DCS. I sit on the drug court bail. So does she now.
What do you do if you get court ordered, but they're not cooperative? What do you do with that?
Oh, those are my favorites. Yeah. Those are my favorite. So we work very, very closely with probation. We work very closely with, of course, being on the drug court team. You're constantly in contact every Monday with the system. And so what we will start with is we will start trying to put them in what we call motivational interviewing, which is just getting them to a place where they're willing to make a change. That's where you have to start, because if they're not willing, it's got to come from them. If they're not willing to do it, I can do all the work all day long. It's not going to do it good. Sometimes I have to get really creative and find something. We want them to do it for themselves, but sometimes starting out, actually, most of the time, it's because I want to get my kids back. So DCS is going to keep my kids. They're going to terminate my rights. I don't want to go to prison. I don't want to go to jail for five, six, seven, eight, nine years. So if you've got that hanging over, okay, well, let's do this. If you think you have a legal problem instead of a substance problem, if I can use that to motivate you to change, I will start there. And then as this process goes, the mindset changes and they start to realize, I really do have a substance problem.
You get support from the judge, you get from probation, all those types of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, good.
And it's not uncommon for me to pick up the phone and call Lexi or call Jason and say, hey, so and so's not compliant. Or, hey, have you heard about a drug screen lately? When you've screened, what have you come up with? We'll compare results, things like that. Because it's a very much a full press. If they can come from their end, and I can come from mine, we can get some change. It also depends on what substance sometimes. If like it's alcohol, we're okay. If it's an opiate, that can be a lot more difficult, especially since you're talking about, some of those people have been on pain management for years and were prescribed it, then the prescription stopped because of all of the changes. If you still have chronic back pain and you can't get it from your doctor anymore, where are you going to go? Or we've also seen where some of the drugs coming in, especially marijuana for a while and the meth, were both being laced with fentanyl, which was also problematic. So people were getting addicted unknowingly, and then once they knew, it just kept thriving. So we have done a lot of things to work with that as well. We have our clinic, Win Recovery, which. Recovery, which will do methadone, and we just got Suboxone, um, approval, so then they can have medication that's gonna help with the body cravings part of that, while we're working on the mind and helping them be able to live clean and get out of the drug life and what comes with that.
Can the court dictate Suboxone and methadone treatments, can they require that they take those things? I didn't think they could.
They can recommend.
Recommend, but they can't require any of it.
But I don't think, no, I don't think so.
In the cases where you have people using that, so now they don't, no longer have the physical craving for it supposedly, but they still have the mental cravings for it, is that a common struggle, too?
Yes.
That they think they want it, even though the body's not, not demanding it, but their mind is demanding it?
Absolutely, and that's part of it.
That's a tough one, yeah.
Yeah, part of it, it's changing that mindset, and that's what we, when we talk about being in the drug life, it's, you know, that secretiveness, that automatic need to lie, to cover themselves and protect themselves, all of those pieces have to be broken down as well, and that takes time. Um, and it takes a lot of motivation on the part of the person trying to get clean, so we pull and we grab every resource we can grab, um, we'll work with Hickory, we'll work with Anna Branch if they need that inpatient twenty-eight day, and then we will take over from there, we will link them with, um, Valley for the drug, because they will also do Suboxone, or we will link them with our Win Recovery, because it's in Terre Haute, so for some of our people, it's a little harder to get to. And then we do group therapy, um, Matrix, which is sixteen weeks with random drug screens, and if we've had somebody who's been clean for a long time, or they've, um, been through Matrix and they've relapsed, then we have a relapse prevention, which goes further into, you managed to live clean, you know how to do that, but there's something that got missed, let's figure out what got missed so that you can reset the, the clock and go back and get your, enter back into recovery. One of the other services that we have, um, that we really love is our peer recovery specialist, and it's somebody with lived experience who's been clean and sober for at least two years, and has been through the process herself or himself, and that come on and help our clients that are coming through in recovery, which is great, so she comes and sits on, uh, the drug court with us, she's involved with our clients with a substance use diagnosis, and she's helping them find meetings. Um, one of our favorite meetings around here, um, we hear all of the time is Celebrate Recovery.
Thursday night.
Um, and so that's amazing, we have a lot of people, and she helps get them to recovery meetings, whether it's here, there's a recovery cafe in Terre Haute that she's getting them involved in, so that peer recovery specialist is another tool that we have, that really comes in and helps with our consumers there.
I don't want to take your time today, because I know you're all, I'm gonna go.
No, I came to answer whatever questions you have, so.
I would like to sit sometime and go over all the, all the things, because we get asked, what, what are we doing for the money we spend, and we don't really know, and we've talked about how we don't really know how, what's a success and what's not a success, what, what expectation do you have? The only question I really have is, I've had people ask about Hickory, and the ones who get sent there, where do those referrals come from? Are they local, are they local, or are they from any place in the state, are they DOC? Where do they come from?
Yes, I mean, they can answer to that. So it can be themselves, they can call, um, they do their intakes over the phone, so some of those, like, this Hickory could be, it could be from Sullivan, it could be from Indianapolis, it could be coming from us.
Do they stay on site, or they come and go?
For Hickory, it's twenty-eight day lockdown.
Twenty-eight day lockdown, okay.
So, and sometimes we need that, or we need a detox before we can take on outpatient.
And on that twenty-eight day lockdown, who pays for that?
Insurance.
Okay, their, their insurance, and if they don't have insurance, what pays for that then?
I believe that they do the same thing we do, which is try to get them presumptive Medicaid, which we give for thirty days.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you coming, it's, I, I can, the struggle I can't even imagine, either side, their side or your side.
What you guys have to deal with, I just.
Can't even imagine, so, I would like to meet sometime, we'll do it, we'll do it sometime, even at, even at Air Place, I, I'd just like to have more information, so when people ask, I know what I'm talking about, and if there are things we need to be pursuing that or not, we need to know that as well. I do know that with most of the community health, the mental health centers around the state, there is a struggle between them and the county commissioners and, and the governmental entities. I don't feel we have that struggle, we've had a lack of reporting over the years, as we've talked about, but I feel comfortable that you're willing to come anytime, and you come on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
At least talk, even though you may not have any new answers for us, just seeing the face of notice, seeing the contact is important for me.
That's why I just appreciate you being here, because Jim and I were just at the county commissioner conference a few weeks ago, and, and you just can't believe the other county commissioners that talk about the fact that they know nothing about their mental health programs and what their group provides, they know they're paying it.
Right.
But as Jim mentioned, they know nothing about the program, they never see the people, they never get any feedback from the organization.
And I'll tell them that we have this relationship, even with our health board, they're just amazed that you have it really, they can't believe we have a decent relationship with our county council, it's like, well, how can you operate in a county without those things up? Maybe it's because of a little, I don't know, I mean, maybe the big ones, they're all territorial and they're not letting anybody in, but we're all in this together, we're so small, so maybe that's the difference, I don't know, but Bruce is exactly right, they talk about that all the time.
Well, and I think too, sorry.
No, you're good.
You know, sometimes it gets confusing, especially in mental health, like, for example, we can see, um, for example, we run some school groups, started with Southwest Park and then moved on, um, but we're still there, and it's to help those kids that maybe their family is, they have family members that have addiction, um, or so that they can learn how to regulate their emotions, because a lot of times, use is to avoid feeling emotions, they're overwhelming, they're depressed, they're angry, they don't know what to do with those, and especially after COVID, we have seen that really get a lot worse, I think that time where they couldn't socialize and get that emotional development, um, through socialization and school and things like that not happening, we're having to try to pick up the pieces there to avoid kids starting to use, and we're seeing kids that are, are using THC pens at nine, and it's very common.
And they just, or some of them just want to escape their, their horrible family life at home, and not only.
Absolutely.
So I'm going over here instead, so.
Well, and our goal is always that open communication, you know, you and I had talked about that before, like, we just want to be here and answer your questions and share what knowledge we have, and, you know, help where we can, um, you know, I, for me, as long as somebody is reaching out, if they need help, whether it's Valley, whether it's through us, whether it's through Hickory, I don't care as long as they're getting the help, you know.
That's what we really need to know, how, how do we send someone to you? We don't even know what the process is, how to go about that, you know, but so, it's, it's good stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we have.
I can write something up.
Been begun, begun the process, but there's so much farther to go.
Oh, absolutely, we always just kind of scratch the surface, so.
Well, thanks, I do appreciate you coming.
Absolutely.
And, hanging there's all I can, I mean, for some of those folks, you're the only, you're the last hope, I mean, that's it, if it's not you, they're gonna know where to go, or they don't know where to go, or they're not gonna go, other than.
And they're trying to.
Speed something and put you someplace, yeah.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks.
Absolutely, I'm absolutely happy to hold it.
You want to ask anything, John, you got anything?
Uh, permission to use that camera?
Oh, yes, uh, John asked if he could use that camera, he's gonna begin doing, go ahead and tell him what you're looking to do.
Um, I started working on the parkcounties.gov website, which I guess hasn't been updated regularly since two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, yeah, what has been updated is just election, office holders basically being updated. Um, so like when I do the park without reverse website, I'll just grab whatever off the internet and use it, but I'm not really comfortable doing that on a dot gov, so the purpose would be to get original content, you know.
So he wants to use the camera that, that we bought a year, a few years ago, that was only to be for these meetings, he wants to use it to collect, uh.
Media.
Media, media's a good word for it, media to use on, on our, on our website, so if you're okay with that, I am. You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would make that motion, we authorize John to, to use the camera that we purchased for the limited use of, for collecting media for, for the courthouse and county functions.
Second to.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, covered.
I got two things.
Yes, sir?
You have the ordinance on.
Oh, yes, I forgot your word.
County Road one fifty south.
Here I'm bragging on you, yeah, here I'm bragging on you, you're doing stuff for me, and then I just ignore it, so.
Well, you did ask me what I do.
I did, I did, yes, I did. All right, so we have ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, what would be the next number,